That's good.
Yeah.
All right. I'll do a gavel just for the record. It's about 1:02 PM. Today is Tuesday, October 1st. And this is a market township board work session for the budget. Turn off the dehumidifier. Okay, we have no publics, so we can do roll call, Randy.
Trustee Wiegand is absent and excused for today. Trustee LaRue.
Here.
Trustee Everson.
Here.
Trustee Marx.
Present.
Treasurer Johnson.
Yes.
Secretaries here and Supervisor Durant.
Here.
Staff President is just Manager Grant.
Skelton Crew today. We can save that till later. So this is kind of a follow-up on our general fund budget. If anybody had any more thoughts or questions. My notes.
Really didn't change from last year, other than my budget's a little bit bigger for elections, but yeah, only because your election guy jumped it up.
Yeah.
Realistically, the approach we took in putting the budget together, meaning with the department head was, we wanted to basically give you as close to a realistic conservative budget as we could, so you can stand up in front of anybody and justify what it is as being put into the budget. You know, we don't have any padding in it, per se. I mean, any place that we have extra funding in there identifies what that funding is for. In other words, under your general fund, under your budget, is a lump sum in there that's in there to cover projected wage increases, benefit changes, you know, those kinds of things that we don't really have a handle on right now. There are projections and estimates, but other than that, everything that's in the general fund ties directly to either our history over the last three years or a specific projection for this year that's going to change in 2020. So it's very close to the 2019 budget as it sits. We have taken into consideration potential revenue reduction with Meyer. If that gets before the tax tribunal in 2020 and has a reduction, taking that into consideration.
So you're planning $1,500 from Super 1 for Ryan's field donation?
Two separate, they're also going to do the Christmas.
Okay.
The Christmas.
So you're saying for next year, you get to turn them all $1,500?
Yeah, they've already committed for next year for those two events. And we're in discussion with them about the car show.
The business association is at 500.
Right, that's 500.
They've been contributing that.
How do we stick with Lost Creek?
We are in, right now, we're waiting for a, we've sent them the required two letters that were recommended by the attorney. And we're waiting right now for them to get to that point to basically come back to the board, probably at your, not this board meeting tonight, at your next board meeting in October, with the recommendation to rescind the ordinance and put them back on the tax roll.
Just talk to Dulce about that.
Yeah, what would that generate?
I don't have that figure, but its value is pretty sizable.
What we just sent out was about $82,000 in.
No, but that was not taxable value. That was the differentiation between what they should be charging and what the market is. So that's a service fee.
Those that were non-support, I already want to put it, individuals that would have to pay the whole dollar mark.
Yeah, they're not low-income eligible residents. So that's a service fee, basically. If we put them on the tax roll, then the entire value of the, the facility goes on the tax roll, which is sizable.
We're going to try and put together the documentation for the next, not this coming meeting, the next meeting.
Meeting on the 15th.
Have they been cooperating?
No, they have not responded to anything.
They were supposed to provide an appraisal and they haven't.
I thought maybe since we last talked about it, they maybe came around and.
No, they have not responded to either of the letters. They have not responded to phone calls from the assessor. And they had promised, as Supervisor Durant mentioned, they had promised to get us an appraisal, which they have not done. This was months ago.
They have had, yeah, that was last year, I think.
Yeah.
They have had a change in management, but they're getting all the letters and stuff, so they are totally aware.
Are we saying they're certified?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, they've had a change in management, but it's a name change only. It's the same people, just under a different name, different organizational structure.
So yeah, that'll come before us.
Is that still the Medallion Management people?
No.
It's not?
Well, it is them under a different title.
I thought Medallion was out of it, it was just.
It's still the two original owners that were Medallion Management. They just have a different, they formed a new corporation and transferred the assets over. Fades which, you know, a lot of companies do that. They'll, I mean, the mall did that. Same people, different organizational structure, different name, just to basically duck timing, you know, time issues.
Can we charge them late fees and penalties then?
Yep. Especially on the service fee. Service fee, there's no limitation on how far back you can go on a service fee if it's unpaid. On the taxable value, I believe it's three years you can go back. So we could go back three years and charge them for taxes, just like tax tribunal's doing to us when they reduce taxes in their big box. We have to reimburse them the last three years of taxes.
Tony, well, Randy, you think as a group, you have to have a, go back to having our own law enforcement?
On which one now?
On the law enforcement.
On law enforcement?
In the future.
Really expensive. You know, the biggest, the biggest problem with law, well, there's two big problems with law enforcement. Number one, as soon as you provide it, residents expect 24/7 coverage. That requires seven officers to do that, to provide 24/7 coverage with vacations and time, you know, days off and all that kind of stuff. Comes down, stills down to seven. The bigger problem is, is that you then have to have a housing facility, jail of some sort. The immediate answer is, well, the sheriff's department's jail. Well, they're operating at full capacity right now, so they would not have any solid available to us. And then the other is just the cost, the cost of outfitting seven officers.
Cars.
Patrol cars and the whole shot. So the township did at one time have their own law enforcement. It was basically two people. Hermanson and Ronbalts, those two officers. I think both, well, Jack Ronbalts retired from sheriff's department. He still lives in Turbos. And Hermanson, I believe, is still alive.
Yeah, he lived on Fair Avenue. I think they, he, I haven't seen him on the porch, so I'm assuming he moved somewhere.
No, he's in Nagani nursing home.
Is he in Nagani?
Yeah, I know the family is still at the house on Fair. But the last time I talked with Don, he was rapidly deteriorated. He's got to be 90?
Yeah, he's got to be in the 90s.
92?
Yeah. He's not functional. He sits in a wheelchair, sits in the hallway all the time.
And well, he's, 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 he's living the golden years, as they're called.
Yeah. Golden years.
They're actually brass. It tarnishes pretty quick.
I doubt you're golden years. When you're golden, you're, that's not good.
They're actually, you know, they're actually just, they're just gold-colored brass. By the time you get that old, it's just brass and it tarnishes fast.
Are you ready for that, Randy?
No.
No, not you down there on this one. He's got a long time.
If you're going through this again, any questions on the general fund?
No, I think we're okay.
You'll see an email and I will respond back to all the board members, but I think we're pretty close on it. Fire Department, follow-up from your last meeting, couple of things that we've done in the fire department. That 19,440 that was in question was a carryover. That was just an automatic plug-in that happened, so that's been removed and it's being put into the apparatus fund. And then Lois right now is, the way we're dealing with that, the millage in the Point Six that generates 157,000 roughly, we had a discussion about how that's going to be reflected. Lois is in the process right now of constructing a new account, similar to like the metro fund and liquor lot. So you'll have it come into, the fire fund is revenue, and then at the end it could transfer it out to whatever that new fund is called. And then you'll be able to see in that fund, probably just apparatus acquisition or something like that, you'll be able to see every year that increasing by the amount of what the millage is. And it'll never draw out unless you take an action to draw out to fund something.
It wouldn't hurt to put that in the description too, something like millage or just to really identify it.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be specific, basically, to that apparatus fund, you know, by millage or wherever, however title she comes up with it. But right now, what she's doing is she's searching in the chart of accounts to find a compatible account number to use for that. That wouldn't create an exception with an audit. Those are the only two things that I had under the fire fund from the last meeting.
Where do we sit right now on weekend coverage?
Right now, we're doing well on the weekend coverage. We have not added the two full-time positions. We won't do that until first of the year, right about the first of the year. We'll probably start advertising for that in early December, late November, early December. But what we're doing right now is, we have a group of the paid-on call that have agreed to cover weekend, and they're being scheduled, basically, kind of rotating schedule. So they are physically at the hall on Saturday and Sunday to be dispatched.
It was my understanding that that funding that you had had for weekend coverage is not there anymore?
Well, it's getting, it's getting used. And basically, Dan and I are watching it pretty close, because we're coming to the time of the year now where we're going to have less of those weekend, you know, people aren't going to be jumping off at Dead River Falls and they're not going to be doing things. They're going to be more, as we get into the winter season, a little more sedentary-type activities. Still calls, I mean, we're still going to have calls for, you know, missing skeeters and things like that. But what the position I've taken is, is that if there, if there is a need for additional funding, I'll transfer from the general fund, fund balance to cover it for the remainder of the year.
But I guess what I'm getting at is, is Robert told me the other day that it ended the end of September, and there's nobody scheduled for this coming weekend because there was no funding.
The funding was supposed to cover the summer.
Yeah.
And I didn't realize that they were trying to carry it.
Well, that's what my understanding was, but he said no, that, so they haven't posted anybody to try to know unless.
Dan just, we just talked about that earlier today. How we're going to do that. And basically, what it ran into was, at the end of the month, we had everybody gone. Dan was in Frankenmuth. Our two regular full-times were in their required certification training, and now they're all back today. I talked with the two of them early this morning, and I talked with Dan just a little bit late morning, right around noon time, just before noon. Yeah, and that's what I suggested to him was, is that we still have, we still have that coverage for the remainder of the year. And if we come up short, then hopefully transferring from them or fund, fund balance off that.
Okay. Some of the staff, and I can talk to Dan too, would like to see the scheduling go out as far as possible.
Oh, sure.
So that they can plan third weekends, because rather than two weeks in advance or something, if we can go out four weeks in advance with the schedules, they could, some of them are more willing to put their name down there, because they have, nothing else has come up.
Right. Yeah, and realistically, it's, we had this kind of conversation, Dan and I had. Dan was being very conservative on it, saying, you know, like, right, ensure the budget. And I said, don't worry about that. You know, our intention is to provide that coverage through the remainder of the year until we get to the first of the year. Because we did build into the 2020 budget, the costs for the two full-time that are in that budget, that are in the fire department budget. So we have a balanced budget, including those two new positions. But for the remainder of the year, we're going to cover, I mean, it's not that big of an expense. We'll cover that out of the general fund, fund balance as we transfer.
Perfect. Thank you.
I've had a couple of board members ask about Dulce's hours again that keeps coming up. So I'm wondering if, you know, because of their circumstances with her medical, would it do anything to have something come from the board, rather than just you dealing with the doctor or her restrictions? Would that help you?
Well, not really, because we're into a legal issue. You know, it's a medical opinion. We don't, we can't override a medical opinion. Now, what we can do is, we can say, well, you know, sorry, you can't meet the functions of the job, but she is meeting the functions of the job. So that's what we run into. That's coming up on the calendar. Roger and I are watching that, and it's coming up on the calendar again. The next letter is going to be, not from me, it's going to be from Roger. Because basically, what it amounts to is, we're dealing with a doctor. And basically, I asked the doctor for documentation of what the need is for the current schedule, and he sent it back saying, because I said so, in essence. You know, I'm the treating physician and, you know, this is what I'm ordering. You know, it's, so it kind of puts us in a bind. Roger and I have been watching and trying to calculate or determine, determine how it can be adjusted, and that's coming up again for another letter.
My question, I think I asked, why does it have to be have a Thursday? It'd be better to have a Wednesday.
The Thursday came up because of the doctor's scheduling.
Yeah.
That's where the Thursday came from. The doctor said not more than, not more than, not more than 10 hours a day, not more than four days, and I prefer Thursday for the appointments. So, and more recently, she's been, most, the sick lead recently has been with her husband, who's been going back and forth to Mayo Clinic, has a blood issue. So, I mean, we're all seeing this. I've got, right now, I have four, four staff members with fairly significant potential medical issues that are dealing.
The two new ones.
And two new ones have, yeah, well, yeah, and Ryan just started Monday, but he doesn't have any issues, and neither does John. But we've got, we've got four.
No, but to have two new people in the office, that's among.
But we do have four there. We've got one that's, as of today, retired on a medical issue. We're dealing with filling that position. The crew leader in the upper works department had a medical retirement as of today. So, yeah, he can't come back. So he's retired as of today. And then I've got, you know, the assessor's issue, and then the second assessor has a Mayo issue as well, and we have another heart issue.
Joe, is that Arterius and all that stuff?
Joe has, shouldn't say Joe.
Yeah, we don't even, we shouldn't talk about that.
But anyway, it's, yeah, it's the combination of things. He had the rotator injury to his shoulder. He just had a hip replaced, had knees replaced. He just can't perform the function of the job anymore as a service worker.
When you say medical, is that, what kind of cost to the township is that? Is that through our insurance?
Yeah, you know, it's, it's through the retirement plan. He's going on a disability, medical disability, retirement under our retirement plan. Basically, what it means is, he's going earlier than he had planned, so it's a lower amount that's spread over the same amount of time out of our fund. Well, our fund's 80% funded right now, so we're in very good condition with regard to the retirement funding. Now, Kirk's going to take a, take a hit on that, but as I said, you know, it's all in the funding mechanism, and it's all, that's all identified, and they're calculating to what our premium rates are, keep us funded.
I think I just soon hold off on thinking about the field intern until we know what that department's going to do.
That's fine.
That's just mine.
Yeah, same here.
Yeah, that's fine. And you've got some major changes coming up in treasury right now, too. The Havik Treasury is retiring at the end of this year, and they have no succession plan, and they have no planned internal candidate to move up, so we don't know what's going to happen with treasury.
It's no different than the rest of the time. We don't know what's going on after time anyway.
They did say.
This is the part, it's not, I shouldn't say, it's not the state's treasurer, it's that division of treasury that the assessors are under. So their leadership is retiring, and there's nobody internally lined up to go into that leadership position, so it's going to flounder for a bit.
There is supposed to be a tax sharing increase coming up. I think constitutional was like 2%.
Yep. 1.7% is the other.
Yeah.
But there, I saw, just before I came in, I checked, I checked Upper Michigan Source, and there's a story on there about the governor is scheduling a special meeting, special conference to deal with her vetoes on the budget. So my guess is, you're going to see a change to the revenue sharing to go to roads.
You can't touch constitutional, but.
Again, statutory.
Pardon?
Statutory, they can touch. They can change the formula for that, which they've done in the past. The budget, the budget revenue that's projected for revenue sharing is what was published from treasury. That's what we put in there. That's pretty much assured, that what Supervisor Durant is referencing is, in the, in the new budget, there was a 1.7% for statutory and a 2-point-something percent for the constitutional. Those, some of that may go away to little roads. We don't know. Roads is one of the things that she really wanted to address, and the budget didn't. So she vetoed it.
She went too high, eh? I think the other part of, of I'm concerned, is when you look at the townships that don't get anything, which is over 1,200 of them.
Right.
And that, to me, we're one of them that don't get anything. We're discriminating against, but all our people, and pay the taxes, pay everything, and we get nothing.
Yeah, it's being shifted downstate to meet needs in the larger jurisdictions with more voters, simply put.
Without any further information, we've gone as far as we can with the general fund.
Within the next two weeks, I expect to have better information for health insurance. They said by the middle to the third week in, in October, we should have our confirmed rates for health insurance, and that will go a long way to answering some of our questions.
But you had budgeted, what, 10%?
I'd budgeted 10%. Yeah, and being a little conservative on that, they said, they said they're projecting into double digits. Some have been as high as 15%, some have been less than 10%. So I just threw 10% in as a placeholder. Yeah, there's a 16% around there. But they have not settled on the groups that we're, you know, the type of group that we're in.
How is those company?
Well, just, the rest of the items under the general fund, going to get into those, we have liquor law, we've got township improvements, we've got some of those ancillary ones that have no staff or anything, they're just in-and-out type, type of accounts and funds. Pretty consistent with, with last year. The one exception is, liquor law went up about $2,000, that's simply because there are more inspections to be done in 2020 than were in 2019. We've got two more liquor licenses coming out to the township, so we have more visits.
We're getting two new ones?
Transfers from the city. Businesses leaving the city coming out here.
And they're able to transfer into the township, eh?
It's a process, but, you know, Thomas Theaters has a request in for a liquor license that's currently in the city, so that would be a new one for us. And then there's another establishment that is looking to locate here in the township that would bring another license with it.
We have no control of that anymore.
Yeah, but it would generate more inspections, which would increase our revenue. Metro Fund, again, that's one that we don't have a whole lot of control over. The state levies that and then distributes it. Basically, what that is, is for maintenance of rights of way, like utility lines, gas lines, things such as that. We're responsible to respond to fires and things there. So we get, we get some revenue for that, and it basically just goes into the metro fund and sits there until we have the use for it. Library, we own the library, that's pass-through. Comes in, goes out.
$235,000?
Yeah, it keeps going up every year substantially.
If that's what the public wants to do with their dollars, that's up to them.
They'll have another, another chance at deciding that come November. Any questions on township improvements? There's some big dollars there. And that's basically primarily our road project, the, the local roads project, it's the bonded amounts as it's going forward. We're going to keep, general fund's going to have to keep supporting it as we keep getting tax tribunals knocking down the taxation a little bit. And we're still hopeful that the state, got our fingers crossed anyway, that the state will ultimately do something under the new democratic leadership to turn that around at the tribunal level, but we have not seen any interest in doing that as yet.
Everyone's usually running away from that, eh?
In Michigan?
Yeah.
Everywhere else in the country, they're not. They're hitting it out, or ending it, or stopping it.
Yeah.
Again, under township improvements, we do have the contributions to the underpass that are eventually, that 163,000, roughly 400 will eventually be transferred out of there when we have to pay for the tunnel. That's all of the private donations and grant monies that have come in to support that project.
So if we do, we were talking about some kind of a dedication plaque or something, that's just general fund money then? Either that or more contributions or something?
That would come out of it. We're not putting any general fund money into the tunnel.
Yeah, I just thought the, like a plaque or something. We were talking about that recognition that's on us.
My position with them is going to be that that comes out of that money that came from outside sources, as part of the tunnel. I mean, that's my understanding, from the board's position, was.
I suppose, depends on if the board wants to spend that money.
Oh, the board wants, if the board takes an action to say, no, do that, then of course, of course we'll go. But as it sits right now, it would not come out of township residents, it'd come out of that 163 plus whatever is yet to come in. There are still some pledges that have not come in yet.
Anything else? This is not a done deal. I mean, if you still have questions, obviously you can let somebody know, me or the manager.
Ultimately, we're projecting on that, on the tunnel, we're projecting to be a short $200,000 coming in. As you can see in that very top line, contributions under the underpass, we've got as of, as of August, 168,389, ranks at paid on 196013, if all the pledges come in.
Jason's keeping track of that?
Lois.
Lois, okay.
Yeah, that's going through, through accounting and finance.
Okay.
She's receiving it in as revenue and categorizing it.
So she knows who to, who to contact that hasn't?
Yeah, well, recreation committee's keeping a list of all the individuals that Lois is handling.
She's doing the money part, okay.
Any else in general fund? So it's the only other thing in general fund is, we are, you're wondering why there are no, you haven't seen a generator appear as yet? Because we've got a request in to state police for funding of the generator. And if we get that grant, then that's what will pay the generator. But one way or another, before, before November gets here, we're going to have a generator replaced. It is currently residing in JP Electric. So they have gone out and acquired a generator for us. It's just a matter of who's paying for it.
That'd be nice if it.
And they're going to install it and everything's in two?
Yeah, well, that, the price that we got from them is installed price.
Do we have a pad for it already?
Yep.
You're good. That would ring back.
It's right there.
Ducks and everything.
Yeah, it was all adopted and ready to come into the room right next door to us, the utility room. Pad is actually just on the other side, I think it's just on the other side of the door, on this side of the door, I can't remember.
Right over there.
It's back there somewhere.
Yeah.
You can be kept where you're sitting.
And we put it there and built the building, so we knew we were going to get one eventually. Easy to answer.
It's just where, it's just where.
Yeah, still there. The utility room while they're, we have two utility rooms that go into that one.
So the only other unknown in the fire department then is just the insurance, too?
Yes.
Nothing else we're waiting on with that one.
Now, the city, last night, the city approved the maintenance agreement that you approved at your last meeting, so that's good to go. We have our. Uh, we have R and R here today doing pump testing and they'll probably continue to do that because that's a specialty that I don't think the city has certified folks for yet. But the city does have anticipation now that we have a joint agreement that they're going to add one or two additional texts, um, that will have some certification beyond that. So, but we're good to go. So, uh, I communicated with Mike Gansley this morning and Chief Shanahan's going to get in touch with, with their folks and schedule.
That's good.
Excuse me.
Do we need to add that to tonight's agenda? Is there a timeframe?
You already did, you already did it. You added it on the last meeting, so I'll just report tonight that it's been approved by the city commission as well, so it's in place. And as soon as we get the sign from back, we'll put it in a packet for information purposes. Probably a meeting on the 15th, you'll see that. Sign, sign it, done.
You want to talk about your, um, software? Cause I mean, we already went through your budget, but.
Yeah, well, I did, uh, email everyone on a link for that. I don't know if you got a chance to watch it or not, that presentation, if you didn't.
That's the same one we looked at last year?
Eh, sort of similar, yeah. Basically what the software does is it makes the agendas more searchable, excuse me, more searchable and, um, you can tie the video to it. So if we're at a meeting and we're talking about a water project or manager replacement or whatever, all you do is type manager replacement would pop up on the screen wherever, whatever meetings you talked about that with the video there. So I mean, it gives you some advantages that we don't have now. Um, it's not backwards compatible, though it's forwards compatible. So, um, I think it was about $300 a month, I think they were going to charge, so around $3,000 some dollars a year to run that software. Now, I, I, I'm going to talk to the city and see what they use. They don't use that, they use a different system. But, um, I'll have something, you know, maybe, and then also these people would, if you want to have a separate work session with them, they do a presentation also. Um, but, uh, you know, I, I don't like that you, you get locked and I think they wanted a three-year contract. I don't really, I'd, I'd rather just do a one and see how that would work. If it works good, then move on, but, um, but it's up to the board to see where they want to go with that.
I'm curious though about the, it was a half hour presentation and.
He kind of slammed through it, yeah.
Yeah, he was just ridiculous. It was awful. Just the arrows would think it was going and to do this and pull that down and, so that's what I was thinking. Whose benefit is this? You're going to be the one doing the backloading. We can't contribute, I mean, who do you see contributing to the agenda? It still has to be approved, it's.
Yeah, well, basically, it would be, it would be done kind of the same as it is now, but it would just be different a little bit because rather than bringing your paper copies to Andra, you'd probably just be emailing them to her, which she can do now anyway.
Yeah.
And.
It, it helps with search capability.
Yeah.
But it's huge, it's a huge package.
And, and I, and I think that, that your question is appropriate because who's doing the search if it isn't Randy?
Well, us would have the expertise to do it. I mean, to get in there and change things.
These are luxuries that we just have to decide whether we can afford.
Yeah, and that's, and then that's what I've told them. I said, it's up to the board direction where they want to go and if, you know, maybe it's not now, maybe we should wait a while and see what else is out there.
So how is this different from the first package you showed us?
It's basically the same.
Yeah, but the other one seemed so much easier and, um, I don't, I don't know.
I'd have to go back and research.
Really intricate.
Yeah, I'd have to go back and research it.
It's set up for a great big city commission type.
Yeah.
It, it really works when you have, especially works if you've got a litigation case and you've got a sea of documents in it. You have a group that looks at them, codes them, puts it into a, an electronic file and then all you get to do is bring up keyword systems and it pops up with everything. But that's when you have thousands of documents that you might want to look at.
Correct.
It, it, it really is a luxury that you have to wait whether you can afford the law.
Yeah, or you want.
The other place it may come in valuable is if they have a FOIA request.
Correct.
Yeah, but, but the only issue with that is it would only search documents that resided with the board. It would not search documents of staff, you know, on individual computers or laptops. So you still have to do the manual, you know, the manual search everywhere.
To do that, you'd have to have more staff coding.
Yeah, everybody would have to be inputted into a.
I mean, it, it goes on and on and you have to decide whether we're at that point of need.
Well, that's why I said that program last year seemed simpler and it wasn't as expensive. I can't remember.
Yeah, I think it was maybe $200 a month versus 300.
Yeah.
It was a little cheaper and it did seem a little simpler. I can look.
And I think it's a good idea because we, we, how many times have we been sitting here and we just, well, how do we find that document? You know, and the word search thing would be awesome. The idea's great.
Or whether you can afford.
Yeah.
A luxury of that.
And the maintaining.
Job of.
Cause he said something like 3,300 a year and then it was hard to tell when we were talking about video and I didn't know if he meant another 3,700 or up to 3,700. It wa, it wasn't, he wasn't real clear.
Well, let me go back, um, a year, I can go back and search in my email and see what the other group is, you know, with other people, because that was a little bit cheaper.
That wasn't putting agendas together really though.
No, not really, it was just uploading, yeah.
So that's why I'm asking, what, what are you trying to accomplish? What's most important for you?
Well, I think this software is more, and, and we don't have that big of a staff here, but it's more departmentized where you have a clerk that's full-time, that's getting, gathering all the information together and then putting it together in like an electronic agenda, which that is.
Yeah, yeah.
And, um.
And it has approval levels.
Approval levels and different.
And it's had the different payroll department, personnel and accounting.
I mean, in a huge, probably in like the city would be okay, but I don't think we'd need that level.
Yeah. So I guess if you're thinking, if you want help with agenda preparation or if you just want the ability to search.
Well, I think the agenda preparation isn't that big of a deal because it's, I mean, we could handle that pretty easily. It's just that the search capability with the video, that's amazing.
That's what I was thinking.
Because how many times would we sit here and say, oh, you said this or this agenda item, you know, or whatever, um, and then we could tie the video to that.
Yeah.
And then actually with that other system too, of course, it's going to drive your cost up. I mean, you could put planning commission meetings there and do the same thing, but that's going to require more staff to do that. You know, video and, I don't think we're to that level either.
Well, I think video, I think planning needs to be on video or YouTube. That's, they do some important stuff and it might help get the public more involved because I think they forget about the planning commission, you know? They don't realize how it affects their neighborhoods and if they had an ability to click on the meeting, they might be participating a little more or at least asking questions.
There are 18 people here who are a little interested in their community.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that one. But you know, realistically, the, the planning commission of all probably should have that level of documentation because their appeals don't come to you as a governing body, they come to the zoning board of appeals and the zoning board of appeals can only be appealed to circuit court. So, you know, the, the record, the verbatim record that you would have in a recording of a planning commission session would answer any question that anybody would have simply by reviewing, you know, what was actually said. Only what was said, but how it was said, you know?
The intent, yeah.
Was it, was the intent as kind of a, kind of a joke or was the intent a factual finding? You know, and inflection, you don't get that from minutes, you don't get that from a written document, but you would get that from the video. And if you're going to have something like was occurring at the last planning commission where you had 18 or 20 people making public comments, somebody trying to write down and capture what their comment was and what their inflection was, it's almost impossible to do. But if you had that on video, if there was a challenge of some sort in the future to the ZVA, the ZVA could review that record, make a decision or a determination and then if that was ever appealed to circuit court, they would have a solid record of why they made their decisions.
Can, Jason would know how to download that and I, Randy, you wouldn't have to do that, right?
You just had to, so, yeah, I could show him how to do it.
Or, I mean, somebody else.
Well, what was nice about that system, what was nice about that system also is you didn't have to do it live. You could, you could record the video and do it the next day. It'd take a little bit more time with your backholding it, but if you're at the meeting, you could slide the thing ahead and, you know, tag it, because you'd be tagging spots in the video. So, yeah, you don't have to do it live and I wouldn't be doing it live. I would get the video after and then, you know, go through the agenda and you'd take that part of the video with that agenda item and then move, keep moving on. So I don't think it would take horrible amount of time to do. But I'm looking at what the city's got right now for their agendas. It isn't nothing tied to video, I just don't know if it's searchable, that's the.
What's, what's involved in having, could the next planning meeting be recorded? What, is that something that takes a while or is it just a matter of you doing it or?
It's just a matter of getting someone here to do it, yeah, that's about it.
Okay.
Or for that matter, having, you know, you just, you don't need to zoom, I mean, you.
No, you just, you could just.
The white angles and staff start the recording and then at the end of the meeting, stop the recording.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I.
With a fixed camera.
I'm looking here in the cities, you know, they got a, call Novus Agenda, but they don't have any video, but it looks like you can search, um, containing text items, like if, it is typed like water rates up, it popped up the meeting from last night. Um, so I mean, it's, yeah, and it gives you like the utility rates, public hearing schedule.
Well, and sometimes all you're looking for is when.
Yeah.
You don't even need to have the document under there or.
It's just what meeting had happened.
So at least you can figure out where to look.
Yeah, so I mean, I'll have to do a little bit more research into this and I'll, I'll go back a year and see where that other group is. I'm thinking the, the people that we dealt with this recently, I do agree, I think it's a little complex for what we do. We have to have baby steps here before we move too far.
Well, and sometimes if something's too involved, you're less likely to keep it up, you know, if it's simple.
Well, yeah.
Then you can just do it.
And we're sitting here, you know, you could have a new clerk next December and they might not know nothing about it. So you're going to have a system in place that.
That's why I asked how, who's, who's going to be maintaining it.
Yeah. So I mean, it's something that we have to look at.
You could just add it to the treasures department.
Yeah.
Get in there.
So I'll do a little bit more research, but I, I think I've got the consensus of the board that the current system we're looking at is way too above advanced of what we want to deal with. I'll look at last year's and see what, um, uh, I didn't talk to those people since last year, so we'll see what they got. And we'll move forward from there.
I don't think we had any other special requests that anybody wanted to try to do this year that I remember.
Oh, I did miss, I did leave early. What was the, I did catch a little bit of the last conversation about the community room, so what was decided on that, Randy?
So in the process, we're, I'm waiting for 9:06 to get back with me.
Okay.
But I was, uh, looking at Walmart, uh, the other day, over the weekend in there and they've got the 78 inch screen for under $500. Yeah, that was, and it was a pretty, pretty good quality screen as well.
And it didn't have, the quality for the community room is not necessarily, do they want the, what they need, the exotic, clear pictures. What they need is to be able to.
See it.
Yeah, they need, people need to be able to see it.
See like.
You can buy, I was, I'm, I know what Gerard was looking at. It was about 70, $780, you could buy a 72 inch screen that would give them 70, no, 75 inch.
75 inch, yeah.
75 inch screen. Now, it isn't going to be crystal clear for looking at, uh, nature films or something, but it would communicate whatever they had imprinted that.
And I think it's like this room, you know, this screen, if we only had this screen, it would be tough for the audience, but we got two additional screens out there that they could see closer.
These are probably small screens, but, you know, you can get, you can get a 100 inch screen too, I mean, which is, you would cover essentially the majority of that wall. But I, I guess the, the real question, you know, and we're at, we're at kind of odds. I mean, obviously the desire in the community room was to have, you know, the state of the art, you know, screens coming down from the ceiling and projector and the, you know, the TVs, monitors as an alternative. What does the board want? I mean, you know, what, what, I mean, for what, I mean, we're not Thomas Theaters, I guess, is what I'm, I'm trying to get at. I mean, you know, and the, the, once, the once in a while do we have somebody who might want to use a projector as worth spending $10,000 to do?
And maintain.
Yeah, and maintain, or do we get, or do we get the same result by putting a larger screen, um, at the, at the head table and possibly on the, on the west, yeah, on the west wall where we've got pictures between the two big windows, put a 75 inch screen. So you've got.
Yeah, you could.
Over-facing folks and the, and the side-facing folks have a, an excellent view and all you need is a jump drive basically to play your materials and you're talking about $1,000 versus $10,500.
Yeah, you could do much like this room and just have a few more screens for the people that can't see the other one.
They drew upon a microphone.
I've been in the back.
The biggest issue is the audio.
The sound issue.
That's the biggest issue and I think in that whole package, the audio was like $1,200.
Yeah, and that's separating it from this room because initially when, like Randy said before, we, we designed that room for overflow.
Right.
And actually you can have that room or this audio that we're speaking will go into that room and, um, you could watch, even if you had live streamed your camera, you could see the meeting in that room with the audio, but I don't think we need that anymore.
On that issue, that's where we're at. We've got the I want versus dad won't give it to me, you know, that, that, that conflict. We've got about a $9,000 spread, which in my opinion we can use more effectively or efficiently.
Well, and you can also too, you can get, you could really cheapen the screens up if you had the pull, not the push button, but the pull-down one would be fairly cheap too.
I just want to be able to see that screen from the back of the room because we've got lots of tables in there.
Yeah, well, you got a TV like that in there and that room is much bigger than this room and I, I sat in the back the other day and I couldn't see that screen.
And the other thing quite frankly is, is that the, these blinds are generally okay, but they're not darkening blinds.
Not really.
You might want to put maybe darkening blinds in. And here it's not a big deal because we need it at night, you know, except in the summertime and then the sun's high enough that it's not shining through the windows anyway. But if there with the west exposure, maybe on the west end, we put dark, you know, darkening shades as opposed to these kind of shades to just darken the room, cut glare. Uh, and so, anyway, that's where we're at on that. So maximum is going to be about 10 grand out of 134,000, uh, you know, that effect in the general fund. I'm preferring it to be more like one to two, uh, you know, to go there. So that's where we're at. That will be wrapped up before you get through with public works.
Thank you. That's one of the better plans.
Christmas time, you'll probably be able to get that 75 inch screen for 400.
Yeah. Well, if you got a, like I said, and you could, you could utilize that existing screen on the wall in that room.
On the other wall.
And then you could buy two bigger screens and that way they could cover that whole room. But the audio, as you said, is the big thing.
That's the.
To make sure, well, I had a huge problems with audio at this room and now I finally got those, the more expensive microphones.
Yeah.
That really help.
My mother-in-law appreciates it.
And they, they really cover the, the sound a lot better.
And when we. And when we break this off, that'll help over there too.
Yeah, separate that room, it'll be a lot better, correct.
What happens if they do what on the 400? Buy three of them?
Two, anyway.
Well, plus we have one in there.
We have one screen in there now.
Yeah, we can put that on sidewall.
We'd have, we'd have two sidewalls and a headline.
But, you know, next month, when they start throwing pricing, it could be in December, mid-September towards the end. I mean, if they come up, it's cheap enough, buy it.
So 906, you're waiting for what it's going to take to get that, because we have to get up into the ceiling.
Waiting for a better definition of what it is that he actually proposed in that $10,400 price, because it's not broken up very well. I want him to tell me, you know, we're talking something about ceiling, what are we talking? It's just got a bunch of numbers, you know, article, item numbers. So I've asked him to break that out, tell me what it is, what it is you're talking about and what labor is associated with each of them.
Item by item, yeah.
Yeah. So that, that's an issue we have with 906, is they know what their, what their RXQ10 is and, you know. Well, of course, it's, it's that. Okay, I have no idea.
That is a doctorate.
Yeah, everybody's been pretty conservative, so...
Really, the township hasn't never been very extravagant.
And, you know, some of these communities that have budget sessions and they talk for an hour and they okay it. We've had some long sessions over the years, mostly with, with the water department, because that's a big part of our residents' budget. And the increase is that Randy was showing me yesterday on the city, just unreal. And I think a lot of that comes because they don't research the stuff the way we do. We pick it apart and say, what can we afford and how can we do this? And still save for the future repairs and replacement. And I don't know, I don't, yeah, we've had some long meetings, but they honed it down. You know, the discussion, the information we got.
Well, we're still not as good as the county, though, they do the one meeting.
Yeah.
But they don't do nothing.
Yeah, we don't cancel meetings either.
Roll, roll, don't take them off. Give it to you, want to do something, well, can't afford it.
Well, I guess...
Should we pass, move on?
Yeah, I guess you'll have your, as the manager said, you'll have your opportunity at the, at any time moving forward, but at the December public hearing or before the December meetings.
You can always come back to any budget up until the point of adoption. And even after adoption, you can come back and amend your budget. The only, the, the regulation is, they have to have a public hearing fixed on a time prior to the end of the, end of the budget year and so many days before the public hearing actually occurs. And the budget has, a balanced budget has to be adopted by December 31. What you do after December 31 is up to you. I mean, it's a, it's a living document. You can amend it, you can modify it, you can do whatever you do want, but you do have to have a balanced budget adopted and published by December 31.
And it has to get to the state that is a requirement.
It's a requirement to be qualified, yeah.
Okay, should we move to the item two, is manager replacement discussion? And I didn't give you more copies of the, the little forms that I sent out with the questions? See if I even have, and I know it's on my computer. But basically, in a nutshell, we have someone who's interested in the job. So the question is, we have two RFPs we've received, one's about 20,000, one's about 25. We have not pursued either one of those yet, to see if we want to talk with them or, you know, start any process. We have done some advertising. We've got MML to, to disperse help wanted, so we've got MTA, Michigan Township Association. Well, I'm just saying, those are our, those are other options.
Our sources.
Right, that we can do, we've got the mining journal.
Just take an ad out, like we did before, Randy, basically, and the MTA and...
Well, we kind of said, you know, we didn't necessarily want to do all the backwork. We wanted to have somebody else take care of it. I think, we're thinking there might be 20 candidates or, you know, quite a few that would have to be weeded out. I think that was our, our first intent, when we said let somebody else handle it. We didn't know, we wanted to have the manager in there, um, running background checks and, you know, doing the matrix and all that. We kind of said we didn't want to deal with that. So that's what I'm asking, before we take the next step of going to talk to these RFP people, do we want to consider this candidate who has to be anonymous for right now until the actual interview happens? Uh, they're willing to submit an application, whatever, whatever we want. So that's all I'm asking, and I've already talked about it to make sure.
What is the deadline on, on when you send out?
Nope. The only action that the board has taken so far is a determination that you wanted to go out and seek RFPs from professional search firms. So we advertised that, we listed it on the MTA, we listed it on MML, we listed it on the county, uh, county, uh, MAC, Michigan Association, the county's website. We advertised it in the local paper and all of their editions, and we received two responses. We received a response back from Michigan Municipal League with a proposal and we received a, also a proposal from government HR. Both are very highly regarded reputable entities. They came in fairly far apart. Um, the government HR was 21, I gotta hear, 21, 21,4, $21,400 for, for the whole package and MML came in a little higher at 27,5. Both of them have done a number of searches for executive positions in local government in Michigan recently and have a, a fairly large list of potential candidates, let me put it that way, that they've already vetted for other, other places and things such as that. So now, where you're at is there is no commitment with either of those. We simply asked them for an RFP and they submitted an RFP. So I think the question that's being asked now, and when it's correct, we know of one person who's interested in the position. Uh, and the question before the board is, how do you want to deal with that? Now, from my standpoint, and I did send out earlier today what your, what your, your current process is for advertising. And that's predicated upon your anti-discrimination requirements, that you do have to advertise the position. I mean, to others, you can't just close it off and say, we're hiring John Smith, unless John Smith is already an employee. Uh, because basically, what you're doing is you're closing off segments and protected categories who don't have a chance to apply if they're qualified. So, uh, timing is your concern right now.
Didn't we also advertise in the mining journal? Hasn't been advertised there?
No, not for the position, no.
That's right, yeah.
Only for the RFP, the request for proposal for search firms. We have not advertised at all for the position itself.
So if we've got a candidate that's qualified, that's interested, that we maybe would like to do an interview with, we cannot offer him the position because we did not go seek other candidates?
This is, you, you, you should give an opinion from either Roger or from...
Dad heard that from...
But the issue is, under the anti-discrimination laws, you can't just go out and hire your favorite white guy. See where I'm going? You have to, if you've got a publicly funded position, particularly a top-level position, there are, there are federal and state requirements that you have to advertise that or make it known that those positions are available, so people in protected class are not excluded from the consideration.
Basically, you got to advertise and then pare them down and then do your interviews and...
Yeah, and that's why your, that's why your current recruitment policy is written the way that it is. It's basically, you have a full disclosure that we have a position open and if you're interested, you have up until such a date to apply, here you have to provide.
What would, what would be required to meet that requirement?
For an ad in the mining journal to provide?
If we just...
However you advertise it.
Locally, locally, how we're doing.
Advertise and then show, pair your candidates.
Well, that's our first step.
But here's, but here is a, this is just a concern from my stand, my standpoint. A concern that I would have is that if you have a candidate that you spend the time bringing in or meeting with to interview, and for some reason, that person decides not to come, you've lost that amount of time in your recruitment process and you have to start over again. So it's up to the board how you want to go about this.
I'm, I'm just trying, trying to figure out, so... If someone, and I think we've got more than one, if someone has indicated an interest or if there are more than one, and I think there are, of possible interest, would an advertisement of, that the township board itself was, or some delegated person of the board is inviting those interested to submit an application, would that still meet the requirement?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, all right, sure. So that's what would get us over that first hurdle that you're talking about. All right, I think we, the board needs to come to grips with, aren't we interested in doing something ourselves, which is really contrary to earlier discussions? Okay, if we're interested in doing that, then we have to follow this procedure that makes it appropriate and have a delegated individual authorized to conduct that. And then we could invite those people to come and make a presentation to the township board. There's no question about that.
You could very simply, and it would take you like three days to do this, you could very simply put a display ad in the mining journal, in all of their editions, and just have it be a blanket township manager position available, minimum requirements are X, Y, and Z, submit by Friday, October 15th to the township clerk.
No, to the clerk or to...
I'd say to the clerk, because the clerk's the official record keeper by such and such a date.
And then, and then the clerk could communicate with whoever is designated to have a, have a discussion about when to come in, and that would be a coordinated thing with the board.
Well, it's a little more involved than that, but you've got people who are working. Uh, my understanding, when Randy first announced that he was going to retire, there were two other people who were interested in addition to the one that contacted me.
One has contacted you?
Yes.
Okay.
And so there's might be three possible.
What they're doing is inquiry about how the hell can we get going on this?
And if you want to do the RFP thing, that's fine, we just need to do something.
I, I agree.
Randy's been waiting, hang on, hang on.
I think what Randy said, advertising in the local paper, you, you meet the qualifications. Maybe not as much as some people want, but the qualifications are met then.
Correct.
Then whoever this individual is, we can't do anything with until after this ad, as far as I'm concerned, has been displayed in the paper. But once, once you do that, then you can...
End it.
I think what you do to shorten this whole process, what you do is you put right in the ad, because whoever's going to be applying for this job is already employed somewhere else. And they're going to want confidentiality.
Oh, yeah.
So you build right into your advertisement that if you wish confidentiality, so indicate on your submittal to the clerk. Then, once they've requested confidentiality, you as a board can meet in closed session to consider them.
We can't, as a board can't meet in closed session?
You, you can if they request confidentiality. You can, you can meet in closed session to consider their confidential application.
I don't think you can do it as a full board.
Well, something better than that is if, if the board appoints a committee to, along with the manager, to go over those applications once they come in, you can meet with the confidentiality and there's no...
Well, the board did that when they hired me.
Yeah, they had the officer to do that.
The clerk, the driver, and the supervisor met with me and, you know, and the other candidates, basically, because we, we asked for confidentiality. The law gives you the ability to do that in a closed session.
But the advantage we have now that the board at the time didn't have is, I think, well, you know, didn't they fire her?
Manager was already gone.
Gone. He was gone, so they didn't have a manager to help them on.
You can put a, you can put a display ad, if, if you were to contact the mining journal today, this is Tuesday, by Friday, you could have the ad in the paper. And run it for two days and you're done.
Randy?
So this is the way I see this going, if, you know, we can save quite a bit of money going this route. And we do a display ad in the mining journal, and even if, even in the MML or MTA website, doesn't really matter.
And, and you let the three people that have supposedly made a contact, you'll let them know that it's advertised.
So that goes on two or three weeks, you know, and then you get your, um... But I think that when, how the fire chief, how we hired that was a perfect, you had a small committee that dealt with that.
A little different.
Little bit different, but I would see...
Yeah, we had two other, two other fire chiefs and myself take a look at it.
I would see a, a small, a three-person committee of the board, go along with the manager, looking at all those applications and paring it down to four or five people, maybe.
Well, and if you only got three...
Number of candidates, potential candidates, and most of them will probably not meet your requirements.
No.
So would your matrix that you use with the rest of the employees satisfy your requirements too, or would that have to be...
That's right, I gave you three different examples of matrices, you know, and I included the one when the last supervisor was appointed, because that was a very detailed matrix. And then I've got for the one we use for the fire chief, the one we use for public works are attached to those. You would construct a matrix, basically, on what, what the board felt was the most important aspects to really key on, and then you assign points to that.
The other thing I want to mention before I forget is, we have a contract to look at too. And we've got a baseline with Randy, so you can, if you've got a copy of that to look at, to get yourself familiar with it, if it needs to change, we have ideas, we want to leave it the way it is, keep that in the back of your mind. And we can get you another copy if you don't have it.
Yeah, because whoever you hire...
We have to, that's our baseline, we know that we've got that to work from, we don't have to start over.
Yeah, the manager's a contract employee to the township board.
Yeah. And the advantage we have is we have a contract with you that we can use as a baseline moving forward.
Said that. Dan?
Thank you. I guess it's my opinion that if we can save 27 or 21,000 dollars by, if you feel that, that one or all three of these candidates are, are capable of doing the position and are high on your list, then let's put the ad in the, in the mining journal, get that done with, and get the applications in and start the process.
Yeah, but you don't want to just go to the mining journal.
Why not?
You could, you have to, it's go, oh, I'm in favor.
Let me, let me tell you...
What we're hoping to do is cover our bases.
Let me tell you what I was thinking.
The mining journal covers the U of D.
Right, not only that, but think about the perfect candidate. What are we looking for? There's about seven criteria, and this is what I've been running through my head the last few weeks. Somebody that would know the, this is the perfect candidate, okay? Somebody that would know the area and is not going to have a problem, it doesn't have to be a man, it could be a woman. Someone's not going to have a problem with the spouse coming up to the cold, okay? So knowing Marquette, the weather, you know, all that stuff, that's got to be number one. You've got township government, so you're pulling a salesperson or a manager from who knows where that doesn't know anything about government, okay? So in my mind, that's got to be a criteria. Township versus charter township. You know, if you've got someone that even knows the difference or the definition, that's a plus. Somebody that's got HR experience, management experience, and can work... Somebody that's got HR experience, management experience, and can work for, you know, a buck ninety-five an hour, that's all important. But if you've got candidates locally that have that experience, where else would you go to look for, to fill those needs?
Or better put.
Those have to be.
Where wouldn't you look there first?
Right.
Well, I think.
It's like hiring from within.
Your biggest strength is the history of this community. That's your biggest strength, and it's going to be very attractive to people. Yeah, I mean, you've got, you've got a situation where you've got Superintendent Public Works that was served for thirty-seven years. You got, uh, you know, your assessor's got twenty years of experience in this community. You've got, uh, your planning and zoning administrator's been here for almost ten years. Your manager that's out going, going out and retiring after eighteen years, I mean, that's unheard of in the township. I mean, it really is.
Does he get rid of them long before that?
Yeah, usually.
Usually, after, you know, there's, there's continuous growth, there's continuous activity, positive budgets, you got all kinds of, you got all kinds of positive things going on in this community that are going to be attractive to people.
Knowing the people.
Next door, in the community next door, in the communities all around, um, at northern lower Michigan. I mean, it's, this township is known because of our involvement with Michigan Treasury, because of our involvement with the retirement systems, because of our involvement with, with, uh, planning and zoning statewide, with our involvement with all kinds of things. So, you know, it's a very attractive, even though it's cold in winter time, it's a very attractive place to be.
One attraction you haven't mentioned is the first-class township board.
Well, that goes without saying. That's why all the other stuff happens.
More?
That's why all the other stuff happens, you know, and beyond that, you know, the, the tourism aspect of it, as much as people like it or don't like it, uh, is huge. Uh, you know, it brings lots of fresh activity and ideas to, to the region. So, I think it's a very, I mean, you got at least three people apparently that have reached out without it even being advertised.
Yeah. Yeah, Stan.
I'd still like to see it if you advertise in Michigan Municipal League and MTA, and then you go.
I don't think that's necessary personally.
They'll pick it up.
I think, I think, um, it's kind of been not common knowledge, but knowledge that the city manager is not going to be here all that much longer.
Right.
And I really believe that we should be ahead of that game also in picking our candidate before that particular candidate might go to the city. So, I think that's, that's huge also.
We can't make a motion at this work session.
We're just discussing it, but tonight we can.
Yeah.
But we, we could authorize, I think.
But tonight we can.
Yeah.
Tonight you will.
Tonight.
Tonight we can, yeah.
We could authorize the publication.
Yeah.
We could do that tonight.
You can make a motion tonight to not accept the proposal.
Let's, let's agree on, I, I'd like to hear it in detail. Let's agree on what kind of a motion would be acceptable to the board if it was made tonight to get the Mining Journal advertisement started?
I think it could be a very simple motion to the, a motion in two parts, basically, to the effect that you, uh, you've received, uh, RFPs for professional search services that you have changed your mind on, and now you want to have an ad placed, uh, for the township board to consider candidates.
Okay, now, yeah, I think rather than change our mind, I, we, we're going to reconsider utilizing these entities at this point. I just don't accept them.
Yeah, just put it on hold.
Okay.
Because it doesn't make.
It's not a bid.
I know that.
It's just a proposal.
If this doesn't go, if, if the ad doesn't produce what we expect, we still have to do something.
So, you've received the proposals, and your, your option is to test the market yourself before considering the proposals.
Okay, right? I'd like to send that.
Write that down.
I'd like to see it written up, and so Dan can make it.
Well, we've talked about.
No, I'm serious. I, I think it, because we have a session tonight that we could get that behind us.
Look, it's all right, you've got a form, you've got a proposed form. Why don't we use it? Use it tonight as an sample.
Well, I was looking at next meeting, because actually Lynn kind of sent an adjustable one, but.
We can't read.
No, I mean.
All right.
No, just see what you're going to be talking about.
Here's, here's the way you do it. I will put on my manager's report an update on the request for proposals.
Actually, we have an agenda item on that.
Yeah, it's on, so anyway, uh, my manager's report, um, I can put that we've received two proposals, the board can then say, in consideration of only receiving two proposals, we're going, we prefer to test the market ourselves.
Fair enough.
And then, you know, the motion could, could come from that.
Would you please put the motion down so I can give it to?
Ernie?
I think, moving forward a little bit, because we have nothing scheduled in the next two or three weeks on this, that it's, once we put this in the paper and that, and, uh, we met those obligations on federal and state laws and all that, we have, whatever we have is already in the office and that. We're assuming they can then be activated, and we can move forward on those and that.
Yeah, I would give two weeks, two weeks' response time for it.
Okay, but that way, I would suggest, as Randy says, a three-person committee to go through it.
Along with the manager.
Whoever, the three committee managers and the manager, however you want to put it, but they go through those applications and one determine, none of them meet our qualifications, we start over, we go back.
Yeah, it's up to you guys.
And then the next one, that's the three people, and they say, okay, we have one that meets it or two that meets it. Now, we have to take the next step. What is the next step?
Then we would be authorizing somebody to invite them to come and visit with.
We'd have to determine the closed session thing, whether or not.
Yes, we have to do that, and what next step is, but then at that point in time is to let the board know where that committee is at. One of them, we asked, we, we said, no, doesn't meet qualifications, the other two is very good possibilities, or who knows, we may have three more, five more, whatever month.
Maybe ten more.
Yeah, we don't know. But at that point in time, I would say, if we get ten possibilities, you want to get down to at least three. Four at the max.
Yeah, I agree.
What will typically happen, which is what happened with Superintendent, Superintendent of Public Works, um, or Staff Planner, I'm sorry, the Staff Planner, we ran the Staff Planner ad in the Mining Journal, and MTA picked it up and reran it on their website.
Actually, you could send it down to MTA, they'll put it on the website.
Yeah, that wouldn't be any big deal.
That's what I'd like to see. I wouldn't be in favor of doing anything else unless you put MTA in the, also Municipal League and then Mining Journal. If you don't go all, sometimes you miss the boat, sometime by not expanding.
Well, there might be people that have moved away that would see that then.
Exactly.
That could come back.
And they're, they're, if they're dealing with a bigger population, that's always brings a positive to you, you know?
So, my question is, is that's fine, we can do that tonight, authorize the man, you know, reconsider the RFPs and then move forward with our own publications, basically, but, um, so beyond that, you give them two weeks or three weeks to respond.
I'd say two.
Two weeks to respond. So, then.
But you wouldn't even get it to MTA, you wouldn't even get it over time.
They put it up real quick.
Well, so, say you give them two weeks, okay? So, we get ten applications, fifteen applications. I think tonight we should authorize a three-person committee to, to pare that down, so we're even ahead, more ahead of the curve.
I agree.
Because otherwise, at the next meeting, we're going to have to do.
I agree.
Because if we don't do that, at the next meeting, we're going to be making a committee there, then we're going to be behind us.
Why don't we go ahead and do that?
We can say and authorize blah, blah, blah.
Could that committee be a four-person committee?
No.
No.
Can't be.
It can only be three because of the open meetings.
Well, I was thinking of the three officers and one, one trustee, or trustee head.
Well, that's still, that's still majority of the board.
You need, you need.
Well, if we, maybe we can go two officers.
Well, you go three trustees and a manager.
Well, I would be in favor of two officers, not me included, because I'm going to, I'm busy doing other things, but two officers of the board or one officer and two trustees. And I think the supervisor should be, because that's the.
Yeah, I agree.
The supervisor and, uh, either two trustees or an officer and a trustee. That's, I don't have a problem with that, but it's not going to be me.
I just wanted to have one, one trustee in there.
Yeah, that's the hard part about not doing four.
Okay, so, the committee of three should also be appointed tonight.
Correct. Along with the manager.
The committee of three would be whatever we designate, but I, I personally don't think the committee should include naming the manager. The manager shouldn't be choosing any, in any way, form, or.
He's going to be assisting the committee with the manager.
He could assist the committee, but he can't be a member of it.
Yeah.
No, no. No, it's a board committee, that's right.
But see, by the advantage of having three people, you don't have to take minutes of the meeting, because it's not, you don't have an Open Meetings Act violation there. If you, if you have four, you have to have a public meeting, and then you run into everything.
What is the consensus of who should be on the committee? I, I think we just need.
Well, the supervisor is one.
The clerk.
That has to be there.
And I would like to see Dave Webens on there.
If he's willing. I mean, he's not here to defend himself.
You know, Dave, you weren't here, so now you're on the committee.
Well, he won't even be here tonight, though, either. Well, let's do.
Yeah, he can't object.
If, yeah, if you want to appoint him, we should have an alternate then, because.
But we can't appoint him right now. I'm satisfied with the three officers.
Yeah, but I mean, if we, I don't care who either, but I don't want to pigeonhole somebody that's not here.
No.
If for some, he doesn't want to, can't.
I, it's.
We need an alternate.
That's a mistake for other reasons, too.
I just think you just appoint the position, the supervisor, and the two trustees, and then the committee will be.
Well, does Ernie want to?
Named.
You want me, I'll be there.
It's not a lot of hiring, so.
We can have two officers and one trustee, so, I don't have a problem with that.
You can figure out who, if you want, Dave, or however we vote for it, it's up to you.
I'd like to see John on.
Whoever, whoever.
Well, I'd like to see the.
Think about it.
I mean, this is just my opinion, Lynn, Ernie, and John. That's, that's my opinion, so.
If you have time to do it, that's the main thing.
Biggest thing, there's Pete, I love Pete.
No, I, I'd prefer to have Dave on there.
Well, these are things we discussed tonight, we know we have to have a three-person committee.
He's done it many times with the airlines and stuff like that.
Let's name him.
Well, we can't do it now, but.
But you can now agree.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's my, again, that's, you got time to do it, John?
You got time to talk about, think about it for tonight.
Yeah, okay.
All right, and I will get back with Roger, he was supposed to get back to me, and I'm sure he's busy, just to confirm the whole confidentiality part and how we have to proceed.
I think it's confidential up till you have interview, open interviews.
The interview's open.
Once you, once you get to the point of selecting who you want to talk to, then you have to talk to the candidates. At that point in time, they have to make a decision. Do you want to go non-confidential now? Or you want to, if you're going to keep confidential, then I think we have to go to Roger and find out how we have to do it at that point.
I don't think it's confidential.
I've been through this enough times at the University of confidentiality, and you get to that sticking point, and then I always went back up to the HR, and they said, "We don't know," and I said, "Well, you got an attorney, call him." Because I don't want to get caught in the middle here.
Yeah, I think up till your open interviews, right, Randy, it's confidential up till you have an open interview.
In public.
If they request it.
It's, if they request confidentiality, you can meet in closed session up to the point of making an offer.
Yeah.